I'll call this meeting to order and I'd like to ask our city clerk Kathy Swanson. You will call. I guess we'll do, then we'll do pledge allegiance. Stephen.
Okay, Mayor McGowan.
Yeah.
Matthew Lund.
President.
John Glando.
Here.
Russon Weaver, let us know he will not be here.
All right.
Stephen Harper.
President.
Mickey Holt.
Here.
Beth Williams.
Here.
Ken Ratliff.
I'm here.
Here.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so now with the line of, with the pledge allegiance with me. Joining with me in the pledge allegiance, why? I pledge allegiance to the.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, okay, we're back going, so have you had a chance to look at the meeting agendas? Is there an approval waiting anywhere?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda. I want to make a couple of amendments if I could. Under new business, I'd like to add an item 9B for discussion on the status of resolution 2020-10, which was the emergency proclamation for COVID-19. A 9C, which would be consideration of an ordinance that I submitted back in April pertaining to CMC Chapter 212, which I'll be happy to put up on the screen when we get there. And then a 9D, don't hate me, for a discussion on the council policies and procedures.
How did you come up with 9B and 9C?
Oh, is this under?
I don't mean the, I mean the numbering.
These would be under new business because we only had a 9A on the agenda. So I was just adding those in sequential order after.
Are you, are you meaning 10?
Did I mean 10? I'm sorry. Did I have that wrong? I meant 10, I'm sorry. I looked at the file name of the ordinance 1587 and just used that. So sorry, 10B, 10C, and 10D, my apologies.
Well, the reason I was asking under new business, all I got is A.
So I would be amending to add these.
So would you repeat the subjects again, what it is that you're?
Sure, so 10B would be a discussion on the status of resolution 2020-10, which was our state of emergency related to COVID-19. 10C would be the consideration of an ordinance repealing CMC Chapter 2.12. And 10D would be a discussion on the council policies and procedures.
Is that, are you motioning to that effect?
And I am motioning to that effect.
Then I would, I would second. Okay, it's moved and seconded to add the 10B, 10C, and 10D. And it's hard for me to repeat what they are.
I will drop them in the chat so everybody can see them if that'll be easier.
But you know, this is really a lot of stuff to just kind of come out of the blue is my comment. That's all. I mean, it'd be nice if we had a little bit of this stuff ahead of time, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, I apologize. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, to speak in support of the motion, I don't know that from my discussions with Councilman Lund, I don't think that he's looking for immediate action necessarily on anything. He's looking to start the discussion and that way it doesn't just get lost in the shuffle.
Yes. Oh, all right. Okay, good. I'm just trying to get.
It doesn't preclude us taking action. It just means that, you know, yeah.
Well, like you said, discussion, okay. Okay. Are there any other questions on the motion to amend the meeting agenda as such? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the meeting agenda is approved with those changes. So because it's a little bit, because of the times and not being able to do things in person, I decided we'd have the Pangrazi Award presentation at this time. And I don't know, Beth, if you were prepared to announce who they are, but I do have, I do have, and I would announce the people that were nominated. And we did a little presentation this afternoon that we will present for the winner. Did you want to report on it as a committee, Beth, or do you want me to go from there?
Go ahead. I was just going to say that the committee was never able to meet, but we did vote by email in these new times that we have, and it was unanimous for our selection.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll take it from there. So there was four applicants, all which were really, I would say, you know, deserve the reward. And this one is for Ron Jacobson. I don't know if you can see that. And he is up at the school. And he is what they call one of the grandparents, they, or he's a grandparent who's up at the elementary school. And they have a thing called the Watch Dogs, D-O-G-S. And this is Dad's of Great Students. And he volunteers a lot of his time at the school. And he had quite a few letters of support. The other, another one we had was for Larry Shoal. I don't know if that's in focus or not.
That's perfect.
And Larry was very instrumental. He's with the Quanis in getting the, a replacement for the park structure, which they started putting the roofing on today. Then we have Barbara Finley. And Barbara is a volunteer extraordinaire at the Hope Source Food Bank. And they were really hoping she would get some recognition. Let's, we get it. And then the recipient, the one who was chosen though, was Hartwig Thatower. And we, he came by this afternoon and we videotaped a little bit of a presentation. And if all goes well, I'm going to have Rob try to play that. So Rob.
Hey, you ready?
There.
Let me share this. And I'll push play. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, here we go.
Can't hear the volume.
Hey, hold on.
Hold on, it's muted.
That's not. Something's wrong. So you guys can't hear it?
Nope, can't hear it.
Well, that's too bad. Hold on.
I can read the letter of recommendation in case they can't hear it. And try it again, Rob.
Guys can see it.
Maybe just put your phone over by the speaker.
I'm here. Okay.
Trying to do, although.
There's a volume on the bottom right, looks like in slide.
That may as well work.
Please. It's not even on the screen.
These are just a few of the many things Hartwig has done to make the city a better place. He's funny, intelligent, inspiring, humble, and a bit stubborn at times. Once in a while, not for real. All of these qualities that make Hartwig who he is and able to get so many things done for our time. Please consider Hartwig for this honor as well overdue, even though the street's named after him. I nominate Hartwig without reservation. We have many deserving people in our community, but few that have volunteered consistently for decades, as Hartwig has, over 30 years, I know for sure. So Guy and I feel strongly that this is Hartwig's time to be recognized for his volunteer efforts. And as the current president of Quanis, I would like to add our members are also in agreement that this honor belongs to Hartwig. So that was how your name got put on there, Hartwig. And so I have a couple of things for you. There's a little plaque here. Let's see this, Hartwig, there's this plaque, there you go. There's a few dollars, there's some money there. And also, they made up, VNS trees are his favorite thing, you can see here. Interestingly enough, Hartwig draws the heart is over here, if you can believe it. So City of Claymont, Judge, 2020, Judge Poe P. Pangrazi, Memorial Service Award. And this goes to Hartwig Thatower. So congratulations, Hartwig. And it's my honor to be able to give these things to you. And I've known Hartwig for a long time. So, and I can hold that for you. This looks more like a mushroom. A mushroom.
Looks like a brain.
Your wife.
Mary.
Mary is here in the audience too. And we're doing this virtual so that I can at least see. Thank you very much. That's my honor.
Well, we made a best effort there. Luckily I had the sound on my phone. Could you hear it okay at all?
Yeah.
Yes.
I could hear it perfect.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, that's the best we could do for this year. And Hartwig definitely is well deserving. He has done a lot for our community. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, one quick thing, we didn't vote to excuse, did we?
Well, I mean, I don't know, the committee voted to approve it. I don't know, does it count? Does it, I guess the?
No, 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 no.
No, no, sorry, I'm talking about Councilmember Weaver. I don't think we voted to excuse him.
Oh, 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 okay, I'm sorry. I was thinking something else. Yes, I would accept a motion to excuse Russon Weaver if anyone would care to do that.
I still move.
Second. Okay, so moved by Beth and seconded by John Glando to excuse Russon Weaver's absence tonight. He's helping his parents, he's busy. Okay, well, thank you for that, Matthew. That's, things are a little out of order today, but we'll catch up.
All in favor?
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. We'll go down to the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Stephen made the motion to accept the consent agenda. Mickey Holt's has seconded. Other questions on the motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going down to officer reports. And we will hear from our city administrator, Rob Omen. Rob is obviously muted. Let me go tell him, I'll be right back, that we can't hear him, okay?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess all of this, you know, I practiced with that movie today and everything seemed to work, except when it comes to crunch time, the sound didn't work. So I apologize that. And I have two different mutes here and I think everybody can hear me now. So, okay, so here's my report. As you know, that the, the spring, or the summer, we're calling the summer cleanup was last week. And there was, let's see, the numbers, 214 showed up at the transfer station, which was quite a bit better than last, than the last cleanup, which was 178. So I'm not sure if people are getting used to the postcard and they're not throwing it away and then using it. But 800 were mailed, so it's getting better, but could get better as we go through this. So that's that. I did talk to the fire chief today. And he wanted to tell everybody that the burn ban has been lifted, as right now. Burn ban is lifted. Of course, what's, the only thing that you could do in the city is have a three foot by three foot, two foot high recreational fire. Of course, you can, you can burn your barbecues again with charcoal and whatnot. So the burn ban is off for now. And then one other thing, I just got a call from the Washington State Department of Transportation. And they wanted to kind of get the word out that, that the Phase 3 is going to be starting next year. And I was going to try to get to the website, just to kind of show you. So here's our, here's our website. And on our website, I went ahead and put, put down, so construction starts on Phase 3 of the I-9 East Oklahoma Pass East project in 2021. And if you click on that, as you can see, this is their website. And, and so Phase 3 is from, well, my post, Post 64.5 to Easton, which is the west interchange of Easton. So that would be coming, they skipped over a section, but that's Phase 4, if you, if you take a look at that on the, on their website. But they're going to have, if you click down here, it says, there's, there's going to be a live question and answering, but it hasn't quite got a date for that yet. So anyways, the, the DOT wants us to kind of get the word out so everybody knows. And that's all for my report.
There, I found the mute button. Sorry. Thank you, Rob. Next, we'll hear from our city planner, Lucy Temple.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So a couple of updates. In the permitting world, development, we are still taking comments on our two large development agreements. Those are City Heights, which has an end to the comment period on Wednesday, September 30th. That's in two days. And also on the 47 Degrees North Project, otherwise known as Bullfrog Flats, that comment period ends November 2nd. And the 47 Degrees North comments need to go to Kathy. And the City Heights comments are coming to me for, via the planning@cityofclayton.com email address. So I encourage council, if you receive any comments on either of these projects, to please forward them rather immediately to Kathy or myself, depending on the project. For grants, I updated you on some of the grants at the last meeting. And since then, we have submitted two additional grants, or we've completed two that were on the list. And those were the $500,000 RCO Local Parks Grant for the last of the funding for the Horse Parks Covered Arena project. Leslie Thurston and I have been working together. And there were two different application submittals and two different PowerPoint presentations we had to make to the entire RCO board. And the last one was on Friday, and it went really well. So we'll find out about the preliminary rankings this week sometime on that one. And the other one that was an ecology grant for our Shoreline Master Program update, and that was submitted today. So that's all the grant applications for right now. We have recently received two grants, and you know of both of them. But they, I wanted to let you know, they both have RFPs that are going to be printed in the paper this week, on the first, and next week on the 8th. And one of them is the Quadco Planning Grant for the Extending Railroad Street. And Quadco required us to go out to bid for this, for a project engineer. Even though we already have a project engineer, it's part of their checklist of what we need to do. So that you will see in the paper. The other one is for our holiday lighting project that we received the lodging tax grant for at the last meeting. And that RFP or request proposal will go in the paper the same two days, the first and the 8th, with a bid opening on the 15th to get that holiday lighting project started. And then the Planning Commission, we're still rolling with the short-term rental code, which we're hoping, we're pretty confident will be done by the end of October. And then we do have a series of approvals that it needs to go through. So we're, we're getting to having that passed in November. That's our plan. Okay, that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll hear from our Public Works Director, Mike Engelhardt.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. The crew has been, we got dispatched out for an emergency vector job at Sunkadia last week. And then again, midweek last week. So we've been, the jetters been working overtime, getting some stuff taken care of. You'll start, as well as we also did some vector work out at the wastewater treatment plant, helping Willie out with a couple of things. You'll start seeing the crew out running around in the alleys with graders, making sure that we get all the potholes taken care of, to kind of make it a little easier. Come plow season, we're starting to get fired up for winter storm, or winter operations. You're going to start seeing them out doing some more jetting, or excuse me, vectoring of the catch basins. When that takes place on Safeway Hill, we'll have to, we'll coordinate it and make sure that we get it out there in plenty of time. But we'll probably come in early and get that done to try to not impede traffic as much. But we will have a detour in place when that work takes place because of the narrowness of that road. They'll be back out doing any last minute dura patching, pothole patching as well. So lots of stuff coming up and going. Just a friendly courtesy reminder to everyone, being we start so early, we see a lot out there. There's a lot of pedestrians that are out still roaming, which is great. Just be aware that it is darker, longer in the mornings. And some of those pedestrians are hard to see. So I would encourage everyone to make sure that they're slowing down and paying attention to all the pedestrians that are still out walking early in the mornings in the dark. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Next, we have our Police Chief, Kirk Bland. He's having trouble with his mute, we can tell, we see that. Keep looking, you'll find it.
There you go.
All right, Rob got me unmuted, I see. Can you hear me? Because it was, the host had on, okay. Just a few things for the police department. Our new guy, Alec Johnson, he'll be starting the academy next month, I believe. His academy date is October 5th. The academy did us a big favor of getting him in early. They do that for smaller departments because they understand the issues we have with personnel. And you know, it's only one person, that is 20% of our workforce. So thankfully, the academy was able to get him squeezed in early. Most of you probably know, we did have a stabbing this month. That person, Greg Munson, has been incarcerated for that crime. He was taken into custody without incident. And the victim of the stabbing is recovering nicely. Another issue is in the city of Roslyn, but I'll say it here as well. They've been having a big bear running around town. Being a nuisance, getting in garbage cans, et cetera. We've been working with the Fish and Wildlife. And they told me today that they did get a bear trap set out for him up in Roslyn. So hopefully they can get him trapped and relocated. And the only other thing, I just wanted to give a shout out. This weekend, there was a Back the Blue Rally downtown. And I wanted to thank people for all those that came out to support that. And also, a nice lady dropped off some painted decorative rocks for the police department. And unfortunately, we didn't get her name, but I wanted to say thank you for that. That really means a lot to us. And people are showing their support for their local police department, and it's deeply appreciated. And that's, that's what I got for today.
Hey, thank, thank you, Herb.
You bet. Any questions at all, for anything?
No, we've seen the bear in our neighborhood also.
Okay.
Good size, good sized guy, yeah.
He's got to be pushing about 400 pounds from the pictures I've seen, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, he's getting ready for winter. Hopefully he can go hibernate before he gets caught, but who knows?
We'll see.
Now we're down to citizen comments on non-agenda items. If there's anyone in, online here that wishes to comment on a non-agenda item. We usually limit it to five minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? I'll give it, you know, unmuting sometimes takes time, sometimes, if there is anybody there or not. Okay, well, it doesn't sound like there's anyone there that wishes to address the council. So.
I was just going to say that I tend to turn my mute on and off, but it was, but thank you, Rob, or somebody must have allowed me to talk, so anyway.
Okay, is there, here, all right, so we're going to move on now then to public appearances. And that, first on the public appearances, the Chamber of Commerce report by Madison Ford. Are you there, Madison?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for having us here to present the tourism report. Do you mind if I share my screen? Oh, it's limiting my screen sharing, so I guess I can just go through it verbally. Oh, I'm Nick. Oh, it's limiting my screen sharing, so I guess I can just go through it verbally. Oh, I'm Nick.
I just made you the co-host here.
Okay, my name is Madison Ford from the Kitata County Chamber of Commerce, reporting on our Discover Clealum Tourism Campaign for both July and August. And in July, we had over 16,000 users on discoverclealum.com, our tourism campaign, which was up 17% from the previous month that I had reported on. I mean, in August, it actually dropped a little bit with the tourism season, dropped 12% down to 14,322 users. A lot of our focuses in July are surrounding recreating responsibly and doing a lot of those self-guided activities. We know that's a major trend in the tourism world right now. This feels like forever ago, but the July Independence Day Firework Show was livestreamed on social media, and we were able to share that with visitors who were here, and locals, and visitors at home, too. We did announce that there's a dog park coming soon, and that's cooler out to travelers, as we know that they're going to be excited to bring their pups over, but didn't really go into the details yet, as we continue to plan in that regard. We developed a Together We Are Strong little 30-second video to kind of embrace the community connectedness and relation to tourists in that way. So, thank you so much, Steve, for helping out with the footage for that. We updated travelers on the burn ban, posted some fun pictures of the NeoWise Comet, shared some historical elements, welcomed Drew Brew to the area, which was a hit for travelers. I'm really excited about that. Started to push out rentals and the house, the horse park, and other ways that folks can travel to Clealum safely. We're putting out ads that are saying things like, "We're ready when you are," and reconnect with Clealum, and posting a lot of content for people to do that in ways that they feel comfortable. And then, along with that, as always, we try to feature between 15 and 30 local businesses, so I listed those as well here. In August, we did the video interview introducing Drew Brew. I interviewed the owner, Drew, just welcoming him to the area. I'd love to be able to do this for all new businesses, but because this one is also kind of a campus, we really wanted to talk about their long-term plans and what travelers can be excited about. We talked about top summer activities in the Clealum area, tips to beat the heat. As we golf courses started to reopen, we were sharing ideas on that. There were delays on I-90 in August, so just updated tourists as they were planning on coming over. Clealum was also one of the best places to travel, featured in an article by Travel and Leisure, and this was organic, so it was really exciting. We got to share this with our travelers. And yeah, if you guys have a minute, feel free to check it out. It is a good article, especially because we start to see tourism kind of decrease in the fall. I've been working with Suncadia a bit to push out what their focuses are, and also geo-target a lot of the visitors that are staying at the resort to bring them downtown and have them enjoy a meal or the shopping downtown. And I know that virtual school is a major tourism piece right now. So, just letting anyone know, whether they're staying at Suncadia or another accommodation, that we are encouraging that virtual school. In fact, Whispering Pines even has some Wi-Fi in that capacity. Pushed out small group travel, updated travelers on the city park gazebo, and again, featured the same amount, about 15 of the local businesses. Usually, we try to just update travelers on new menu items, obviously reopening guidelines, new releases that they're putting out, new news. We like to just kind of keep that a part of our, our campaign. As far as the numbers, for July, our average session duration was 40 seconds, and the top pages were Top Five Ways to Explore the Outdoors in Clealum, The Ultimate Guide for Kid-Friendly Getaways. So, a lot of these are blogs, they tend to be very popular. Our Attractions page, Top Four Lakes and Rivers Near Clealum, as we're trying to guide people away from just going to Lake Clealum and that's all. And Camping as well was the top page. Top Performing Search Terms really kind of aligns with that. Clealum Lodging, Motels in Clealum, Hikes in Clealum, Camping, RV Parks, a lot of RV and Campsite keywords, as we noticed that heavy impact. In August, our average session duration, so the amount of time people were staying on our site, still was at that level number of 40 seconds. We're trying to raise that, but we're noticing in the industry right now, people just are not booking accommodations as much. A lot of it is camping-focused, doing it on their own. So, in September, we really focused on featuring a lot of our downtown hotels and motels, and some unique ways that they stand out, so that folks could be influenced to stay in a hotel rather than camping. And yeah, same types of keywords were very popular. A lot of the same pages were very popular. In the community, some other things that we were doing in July and August, we hosted the Independence Day Firework Show. I met with the Liberty Drive Coordinator to see if there was a potential of combining our efforts in 2021, whether or not that has anything to do with COVID. We just thought that there was a lot of people who showed up for the Liberty Drive, and we'd love to either have one after another and have it combined, allowing folks to participate in both if they do so choose. Again, focus on showcasing hotels because of heavy outdoor recreation. I've been trying to meet with a lot of the hotel managers and take some pictures and talk to them about what makes them unique, so that we can showcase that to travelers as well. Me, I met with Real Adventures, and they do have rafting trips along the Clealum River, and will be integrating overnight trips and niche tourism-focused tours in the Clealum areas. So, as self-guided tours and overnight tours and excursion become more and more popular, that's going to be a major focus in 2021. We developed a winter recreation map, which we've had this for a few years, but completely redid the design and got really updated data on there, and distributed that across Clealum and to our visitor center as well, so that when the time comes, folks can come and pick up a winter recreation map and know where the snowmobiling routes are, where they can ski, snowboard, and do that in a safe way and be on public land as well. Also, the Cleala, Christmas in Clealum, that is a major focus right now. I've been meeting with the Department of Transportation to figure out some way to be able to do this. When I had tried to make the Independence Day Parade happen, the Pioneer Parade, they basically said, no, we need to be in Phase 4 to allow any sort of parade because of the gathering of viewers. And so, even though we're still not in Phase 4, I did kind of work out with them where we'd be able to conduct a Christmas in Clealum Reverse Parade, where the floats are still, and we have little blocked-off areas of the street. One side would be shut down. And then, the participants who would like to see the parade can actually drive through and do it that way. So, it's kind of a role reversal, where the floats are stagnant, and they can be moving and having fun in their space, but it does keep those participants, for the majority, inside of their cars. This is one of the first ones they've ever done in the state, and they're really looking at using this as a case study, if it goes well or not, for other municipalities around our region. And so, I really feel confident that this could be a way for us to still conduct the parade and have it be allowed by the Department of Transportation. And lastly, I submitted a lodging tax application for the Clealum Independence Day Celebration. This was going to be the first annual event in 2020, held at White Park with live music and a beer garden. We're partnering with Pioneer Beverage or Sandona. And we were going to have rotating entertainers and a fun kid's zone with a bounce house, and unfortunately, had to cancel because of COVID in 2020. So, I submitted our application to conduct this in 2021, and I'll keep council updated on funding in that regard. That is all I have to report on at this point, but if there's any questions, I'd love to help answer them.
Hi, Madison. This is Beth.
Hi.
What have, I assume that we're not having a Halloween parade this year?
That Debbie will present on that, I think, after me. It's going to be a little bit different this year. I'll allow her to speak more on it, as she usually does Buellum. It won't be the traditional Buellum, but yeah, I know she has some exciting things planned.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
There. My unmute wouldn't unmute. Thanks, Rob.
Yeah.
Well, I'm afraid, I don't know. Did anyone else have any other questions for Madison? It doesn't look like it. Okay, thank you, Madison. Appreciate it. Now, we'll hear from the Downtown Association, Debbie Bogart. Rob, she needs to get unmuted. There you go.
He just did. Thank you, Rob. So, Honorable Mayor and council members, it's really great to see you tonight. I want to start out by saying thank you so much for the lodging tax support for our downtown lighting. It's going to be great to be able to operate those lights from the street, not to have somebody go up on the roof and wander on those roofs. As Mike knows, he's done that for years. So, we really appreciate that support, and also adding to our rooftop lightings this, this season. It was important because we've given quite a bit of money away to small business grants in the last few months, so having the support through the lodging tax really helps our budget. It has been a really, really busy time for us. I gave you a pretty comprehensive report. I'm not going to go clear through that report. I'll let you read it if you haven't had a chance to, and I'll just touch on some highlights. So, Beth, for fall, for our Fun for Buellum, I can tell you that we have three things right now that we're planning, and we haven't announced it because we're still working through some approval details. One of them is, is we're going to do two weeks of harvesting food downtown through our businesses for Hope Source. So, we're coming on board with multiple partners, with the Rotary, Interact, with Clealum Roundup, and a couple of other people, just to put some bins at different stores. Stores have been wanting to give back to the downtown and to people that they know are in need, and then we're going to do a canned food drive that's going to go to Hope Source, because they're at the point now where they do need some food. And they need more than ramen. They need some actual canned good food and personal care items. The other thing we're going to do is, we're going to do Buellum a little bit differently. We can't do trunk-or-treating on the street. We can't encourage all the trick-or-treating that we used to do. So, we're going to take it to the kids. We're going to do what we're calling a Boo Cruise, not a Boo's Cruise, but a Boo Cruise. We're going to do a lineup and go through our neighborhoods, the trick-or-treaters, or trunk-or-treaters who normally are in the middle of our street can line up and go through the neighborhoods and, and meet the kids in the afternoon, and just kind of have a fun afternoon wandering through. Got a route that we're going to release here in the next couple of days. We're also working on a couple of details on that one yet. We also are going to put together what we're calling a pumpkin path, so kids can register. They can bring their carved pumpkin downtown, and we're going to place it on, along the, between Harris and Pennsylvania on the sidewalk, and we're going to put candles in it, or these electric battery candles in it at night, and all their, their pumpkins will be lit up, and you can do a drive-by pumpkin path. So, they're going to be able to do that. They're going to get a bag of candy and some other good stuff when they do that. So, those are the couple of things that we have planned. We've talked with Dr. Larson a lot about what can we do or not do, and he had no problem with either one of these. We're hoping to be able to put down no parking signs along this first block here, but DOT is not getting back to me on that particular issue. So, we're just going to call it Parking for Pumpkins, and hopefully, at 5:00 to 8:00 at night, there won't be that many cars on the street, and it'll be fine. So, that's, that's where we are for Buellum right now. We're also starting our Christmas in Clealum. We have a Christmas team that's going to be starting to meet this week to talk about what do we, what do we want to do for Christmas in Clealum that brings it back into a more festive atmosphere, not just storefront decorations, but can we add to the street decorations? What kind of events can we have? We're looking at a virtual Santa Claus time, but Grinch lined up to do storytimes, different times during the week. We are working with a couple of our vacant buildings to put markets inside. We might have a cookie crawl. We might have some small activity events, but we're going to have the music on, and we're going to be promoting our businesses and promoting Christmas in the holiday time. We just know that even though there are some rules that have been relaxed, they're not quite there yet, where we can open up wide and have things happening. So, that's where we are with Christmas in Clealum. And, you know, if the chamber is able to do the parade, it will add a lot more festivity to it. We're working with Suncadia and with Roslyn, so that we could take a look at how can we do this together to make it even more of a, a big splash in a small way in our community. So, we also really excited about the fact that, you know, we received a small grant from the Suncadia Fund, and part of that grant was taking a look at how we can help businesses in a different way. We've given them money from downtown. We've helped with the Cares Funding, but we also know that they kind of parallel, they do parallel, we're finding nationwide, and that is, businesses need to learn how to market online, or how to sell themselves through their social media avenues, through their Facebook, to point of sales online, different aspects of how can they market their business, and how can they attract people into their store. So, we have what we're calling an online marketing leadership seminar that's going to be starting here in the next few, few weeks, actually, the next week or so. And people are going to learn, can be involved to learn about how they can effectively use Facebook and Instagram to drive sales, maybe looking at their website, so it's more than a brochure, but it's actual working website, how they can manage their listings on Yelp and Google and get reviews on their businesses, because people are on their phone, right? They're driving by, and they're going to look for, okay, well, what is, what is it saying about that business, or that place to eat? How many, what are the reviews saying? So, we need to start looking at how Clealum uses these kinds of tools to promote their business and how they can gain followers. So, Sermio Digital is contracting with us to do that. It's going to be a five-week series. We're going to be taping the series, and it'll be available for people who want to go to that later on. Our first round will be between five and eight people that we work with directly. What's really exciting about this is, a week ago, I got a phone call from a gentleman who had gone over to Hope Source to talk to them, because he had his, his stimulus fund, and he didn't need it. He didn't want his $1,200. He wanted to put it to good use. So, he gave some to Hope Source, and he said, how can I help downtown businesses? And they directed him to me, and we sat down and we talked. And I told him about this small business grant that we're doing, that's, it's going to be on Leadership and a Seminar Series on how to market and build your business in a different way. He was very excited about it. He got out his checkbook, and he wrote me $1,000 check for a donation, so that we can further support businesses who may need to sign up for a product, or an online subscription, or something that they can't afford. And so, we're going to be, that small $1,000 is going to go in a big way downtown to help our businesses. And him doing that was really, really supportive, and just really said, we're hitting the mark here with helping our businesses, and it made you feel really great. So, that will be taking place and starting. We are in the middle of our Spotlight Grants. These, this is where we are spotlighting 10 businesses to start with downtown. They're going to go on our new YouTube channel. And again, we're finding that you, when you tell the story of your town, when you tell the story of your business, you attract more people into your town and into your businesses. And that's a well-known fact, that storytelling is one of the number-one things that drives people into your home, into your community, into your business, into your museums. So, we're using that piece. And that, we have Gail from Pickens, who is in the middle of that, and we'll be releasing those probably in about two weeks. We have room for two more businesses. Another fun thing that we did, because we really like our hotels. Another fun thing that we did, because we really like our hotels and our motels here in town, is that we've been meeting with them and talking with them about how they can support our events, how we can support them, what kind of information can we provide for them to give to their clients when they come in, so they know where to eat and shop, all, kind of that whole relationship that we hadn't built before. In that, we started talking about leftover products, like personal care products. And we put together, I think, four big boxes of personal care products, and took that to Hope Source, representing the businesses, and they were really thrilled that they could help in that way, and Hope Source loved getting that information. Another thing that we're in the middle of doing right now, with COVID, we haven't had ribbon-cutting ceremonies, but we've had new businesses in town. So we're putting together our Welcome Downtown packets, and gonna be honoring some of our new businesses. You'll see that on Facebook, and there'll be small, small gatherings, but we wanna recognize the six businesses that have opened up here in the last four months. We're also sad to say goodbye to the two businesses in our downtown core who are no longer with us. It was unfortunate that Tannum and Boons are gone. We'll miss them in this downtown, but wish them the best and hope to see them back in the future. One of the things I wanted to briefly talk just a bit about tonight, and then I'm gonna be done, and that is childcare. And you're probably wondering, why is it downtown talking about childcare? Well, there's two reasons. One is, it's something since 1982 I've been involved in, in a really big way, locally, nationally, statewide. Because when women started going back to work in the 80s, that was a big concern. Now we have families, again, being separated because of school, and the school issues, and homeschooling, and not being able to work, and there's no childcare, because we have about 40% of our childcare nationwide, and 16% in our state have been closed. There's no places for kids to go. And this is from birth to fourth grade. Our state doesn't have mandated a law about how old a child has to be before they're left alone. They recommend that they not be left alone until the age of 10, and not watch any additional children until they're the age of 12, but there's no real law about that. So we have parents trying to go back to work, we have employers trying to hire people, and we have children not in school, so it's just a big mess right now. And I'm on a childcare committee here in the county, and we're taking a look at what are the needs in Clealum, in Upper County, and what can we do to help stabilize or support childcare? Also affordable childcare, because we know that when we can provide that for those parents who need to work, whether they're a single parent, or two-family parent, and they need to work, then they can go back to work, they can retain their jobs, our economy is impacted. So it all goes back to our economy also. So we're doing a lot of study with our downtown businesses, what is it, do you think you need for your employees? Your employees, what do you need? I've talked with several large businesses, we've talked about the retention, and also the retraining costs that are involved when you lose people. So childcare is something you're gonna see more and more, a conversation that's happening in our community, and it's something that we really need to take a look at. So just putting that out there for your radar. And again, just saying thank you for your support and everything that you guys are doing for the downtown. And we're looking forward to the Buellum and for Christmas in Clealum in January, a brand-new year. So thank you.
All right, thank you Debbie. Are there any questions for Debbie? Anyone have? Debbie, you have something else to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we're gonna do a training on special valuation and tax credits for our downtown buildings. So that'll be coming up probably, maybe not till February now, but it's new, there's new taxes around that, and you might be interested in that when it comes out.
Okay. Thank you Debbie. I'm busy.
Yeah, we are.
Okay. Public appearances is the TNC Checkboard Partner, and Brian Straniti, and Jamie Bassi are up next. Take it away, Brian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. This is, my name is Jamie Bassi, and I'm representing the Checkerboard Partnership Planning Committee this evening. I'm the environmental coordinator for the US Forest Service, the South Zone of the Oka, Noggin-Wanach National Forest, that's Clealum and Natchees. And we're here to seek your support for a grant, and it's a simple letter saying that the Clealum City Council supports the Checkerboard Partnership. You've done it before, you've done it with a forest legacy grant already, and also a land and water conservation fund grant. Can I share, can I share a screen? Is that okay?
Yep, stand by.
Thank you.
Just don't accidentally end the meeting like I did last time.
Nice, classic.
I had to call myself out on that, folks. I just walked away, like, I just did that. I just did that.
We also let you do it too, you know.
It was time. I'm trying to find the document I wish to share with you. I'm just gonna share this. Can you see that?
Yes.
All right. It's not at the beginning, so I'll go back to the beginning. Okay, we're the Checkerboard Partnership. I know the city council's familiar with this, because you've been presented with opportunities for supporting this idea before. And I assume Jay had meetings for the Checkerboard Partnership, when we could get together prior to COVID times. So as you know, the Nature Conservancy bought up a lot of acres of former Plum Creek ground, and a lot of them were in the Central Cascades, and a lot of them around Clealum, Roseland, Ronald. And they are considering 27,000 acres that are in the immediate vicinity. You can see here, there's some along the Clealum Ridge, some in the Tannum, and some in Cabin Creek. Those are the primary areas we're talking about for this proposition. A lot of these catchless, cachisse sections has already been bought up with land and water conservation funds, and handed over to the US Forest Service. Same thing with these sections in the Little Natchees, which is great. This is nice, connected forest, and that's what we want, for wildlife and for other resource benefits. And the challenge is that TNC has to get rid of these lands. Some nice people, I'm assuming over on the west side, helped to buy up, put the money together to buy up all these thousands of acres of Plum Creek land. And, but we can only keep it for 10 years. We must have some sort of governing or controlling entity in place to be able to manage these lands, and that's what we're trying to do. And one of the ideas is to form a community forest for the benefit of all residents of Kittetas. Here's one of our meetings. Jay attended. Melissa Speed has been spearheading a lot of what we're doing. And I think you understand the origin of our name, the Checkerboard Partnership, former railroad lands that made this into a big giant grid all over the west. What we have done, we've established a charter, and we have been getting together and trying to decide how best to go out to the community and let people know about it, and get their input on what they would like to see for a community forest. We've identified some ways to work towards that ownership and a management model. Where we're going, we're gonna continue to expand participation. We want more people to come in. As you can see over here, 40 community members or more have participated from all walks, from all different organizations, and we're hoping for more. And we are currently, we have a survey out. You may have seen this ad in the Ellen'sburg paper. I'm new to the area, so I don't know everything by heart. But also, you'll see posters around Roseland, Ronald, Clealum, and Ellen'sburg. Posters that actually have a QR code that you can go and take the survey. So this is ongoing. It'll be going till the end of October, hoping to get your input. And as you can see, I mentioned these before, we've sought your support, and you've given it. Thank you so much. And this next letter is for the RCO Forest, Community Forest Grant. We're hoping you are still on board with this idea. And if you want me to continue, we were thinking about the Public Development Authority as the means of governing this entity and creating a management model for the community forest. And one of the best things about the Public Development Authority is that it doesn't necessarily have to cost residents of Kittetas anything. So it's an entity that can partner with nonprofits, and it also can go after state and federal funding, and that organization, that controlling entity, can use those funds to manage a community forest. We need your continued support. So thank you so much, and I'll take any questions if you have. This light is really lighting me up, man.
Jamie, this is Ken. Hello.
Hi Ken, good to see you.
Yeah, likewise. Just want to go back to, it's the, what, about five sections or a little more than that, on top of the hill north of town that we're talking about.
Yes, and I didn't get into those specifics.
Yeah, and well, in that, I see on the map, it says Phase 1 and Phase 2. I'm just wondering what that means.
So the RCO grant will help us start buying these sections, first in Phase 1, and then moving up to Phase 2. And our funding committee has developed a huge spreadsheet with all sorts of other grant opportunities that will come behind this. And so all those grants will help us acquire these lands. We can't get enough money in one fell swoop to do it all, so we have it step by step, hoping to create this forest, this community forest through the grant process. Phase 1, Phase 2, those are the first.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. You mentioned, oh, I'm looking to see the words, "an authority." How does that, what is that? How does that come about? Public Development Authority?
But you bet. The PDA. The Public Development Authority is unique to Washington. It was passed back in the 90s, I believe, to help communities gather money and exert control over areas that, what I understand, fell into blight. And so a lot of downtown areas, like in Seattle or Tacoma, use these to fix up areas within town that needed investment, and really didn't have any means, any other means of doing so. And what we are proposing is, one of the first ones, to do a community forest through a PDA. Spokane tried to do it, they put it in there, they passed the resolution to try it, but they never used it, and they did not pursue developing a community forest. This will be the first community forest for using a PDA.
Is it a county action, a PDA?
Yeah, so it's a county action, and we would need to pass an ordinance or some resolution making official the Public Development Authority. I'm not the expert on the PDA. We have people that have been studying this quite intensely.
Oh, that's okay. I'm just getting a little, few better ideas about it.
You bet.
And the PDA would not be under, say, the city of Clealum's government or Roseland. It would be its own entity. Is that correct?
That is correct. It would be its own entity, own governing body.
Yeah, the Board of County Commissioners needs to essentially pass a resolution, which they kind of agreed to temporarily. They're submitting a letter to the RCO grant application as well, saying that they do support. We just haven't had a chance to have a meeting about it, given the current pandemic. So they are in support, and the entity would be in no way, the county would be in no way beholden to the entity. The entity is quasi-governmental, so that means that they're held to the same scrutiny, public meetings, email evaluation, all that good stuff that y'all have to deal with, but not economically beholden.
If land goes into a community forest like this with a PDA, what would be the tax status of those lands?
Ooh, Brian, I'm gonna go to you for that.
Well, TNC has always paid, as hard as I can say, TNC has always paid taxes on these lands, given that it's private ownership, and I think that our plan with it, you know, TNC kind of lined out some sideboards, given that we are the managers, current managers of the land, to go forward with the project. And I believe that setting up an endowment for ongoing taxes would be in order, or supporting of payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, so the PDA is a quasi-government organization, but the lands would still be treated as private lands for taxes?
That's a good question. Yeah, I believe so, because if the public development owns, technically owns the lands... Well, that's a great question, because it is quasi-governmental, right? So it could be, it could be considered public lands as the group would be beholden to the public. I'd have to look into that for you, Ken.
Okay, great.
Thank you. That's a great question.
No, that is, it is a little off the subject. We are here to consider, you know, asking the council to authorize me to sign this letter for the RCO grant, and the PDA is something that comes in the future, so I just wanted to see what, if anybody from the council had anything to say about that. Maybe we could go back to our regular screen?
Yep, I'll stop sharing.
And I've got a question.
Yes.
I'm curious, what's the revenue stream? I mean, because some of the development authority has to have some kind of revenue stream, right, to operate? What are you guys proposing the revenue stream is for this, unless I'm wrong about needing one?
You are correct, and that's being worked out. We're looking into grants and other types of funding that could allow for that, for the management of the community forest. And correct me, Brian, if I have gone astray.
No, I think you're spot on. I think that setting up an endowment for future management also comes with a strategic grant applications to kind of parse out the sections up the ridge.
Well, are they at a point where we should send a letter that we support them? Because everything they have, they have questions. They don't have answers on it.
That's, I mean, that's kind of where I was going. I guess, I'm not exactly sure what we're being asked to support. I mean...
It's like we're being asked to support a blank check.
Oh, well, but the check's not coming from you. The check is coming from the RCO.
No, I understand. You took my, where I used a bad word, but blank check. You're asking us, we're, we love forests, and we like to have them maintained and everything there, but you're not giving... What I'm saying is, you're asking for a good idea for our support, but you don't really have any answers right now, is what I'm saying. I think you need to have more information for us before we send a letter, myself personally.
That's my question, is where is the grant application, we're being asked to support a grant application that I don't, unless I missed it here somewhere. I'd just like to see more of what I'm supporting before I sign on to support something.
And I gotta say, they sent in the B-team. That's me, I'm the B-team. There are people that know this hands-down, understand the economics of it, and where they're coming from, and have good ideas of how to develop a governing body and how it will be funded. We were just going on the previous support that's been given by the council, and if you want more information, we can do that. And if you, if you want more information, we can, we can do that.
And I think essentially a little bit too, we are, we are building the car as it's being driven, because we have that kind of finite timeline that I've described to you folks a handful of times at this point. So we are planning as we're going. However, we do have strategic plans to not only fund the forest going forward. This is, this is an app, application. The application is actually being submitted by Kittittas Conservation Trust, because the PDA isn't being formed yet. So the revenue stream would go to them. And then they, they're also a huge part of this, this checkerboard partnership project. And then that, once ours, the PDA has developed, the money would be transferred to them and TNC would continue to support. Yeah. So it's complicated.
That confused me more.
I know. I could see your face, Matthew, as I was saying that. Essentially, we're driving the, we have a limited time to kind of get this done with. So this community forest opportunity grant application is brand new. We've been a part of it since RCO has been developing it, kind of helping understand it. And it's very, it's vital to this project to protecting these lands.
Stephen, you had a question.
Yeah, we're all familiar with Kittittas Conservation Trust. That's who we believe that we've supported in the past. And we understand that eventually it turns, it rolls into another type of organization. I think the fear in the back of everybody's mind is that you got, that this entity that we're giving support to, the Kittittas Conservation Trust is not a taxing entity and it's not an authority. And so when you start throwing out, we are beginning to be turning into it, we just need to know very clearly on the front end, are you ever going to evolve or is there even potential? Because you may say, oh, no, we'll always operate off of grants. When push comes to shove and the grants don't come, we want to make sure you never have the authority to levy taxes on us. And that's, that's number one concern. Yeah.
A public authority cannot levy taxes in any way.
Okay, the other, yeah, and we need to, we'll, we'll take your, we will take your word for it today. But we'll make sure that we have some kind of documentation, you know? Because we're not law experts, et cetera. But the second thing is that, you know, our support in the past has not necessarily been for the, the public, whatever thing. It's been for the Kittittas Conservation Trust. That's an entity that we're very familiar with. To say, no, at least from my understanding and my remembrance of vast support. Yeah. Not against you. I'm just letting you know the background of where this body is at.
This is, this is, I mean, the checkerboard partnership is essentially a new entity. We're coming to, as I usually come to you folks as a nature conservancy representative. So we're kind of coming to you as, as a new entity that is trying to establish these procedures as we're going. Because we need to, because we need to find the funding.
Well, I would say maybe what I would push back is, can you give us what you would like the wording of a letter of recommendation? And then we can look at that letter of recommendation and say, you know what, I feel like I can sign this. Or hey, oh, do we have that? Do I, did I miss that in my?
It's in the, it's in the packet. And I, I just, that was my question is, there wasn't a lot of, there's a lot of platitudes, but not a lot of detail in here. And I, I guess I just, I, after reading it a few times, I don't really know what I'm supporting, other than sort of a very general idea. And that always scares me when down the road, we're talking about creating a new entity that I'm, I don't feel like there's a sustainable funding source for. Grants are great, but you're not always guaranteed them. And then where does the money come from? And I, I don't know. I'm, I'm hesitant to support something that I don't, I don't feel like there's, there's enough clarity on.
Our intention was to be.
RCO, sorry, the RCO, just real quick, the RCO Community Forest application, if we could see the verbiage of it, I don't think it's anything that we're against and it doesn't form the authority. So if that, that's the scope of what we're being asked to support. Correct?
Agreed.
Correct. And our plan was to come to y'all with the RCO already established. But again, I mean, the COVID, the COVID excuse, right? Like, we, we had plans to go talk to the Board of County Commissioners and get this established, get the resolution passed. They hadn't been doing public meetings for quite some time. They just started doing them. They need to hold a public voting, a meeting to pass the resolution. So we are trying to get on the docket for that. And hopefully by the end of October, we all have that entity in the, and it being formed. Right now, we do have a letter of support from the Board of County Commissioners on that Public Development Authority, that they will be holding that meeting and they are in support of it, if the public is in support of it. However, yeah, we're coming to you with a RCO grant application essentially for Kittittas Conservation Trust.
Then I, I would move that we authorize the mayor to sign the letter that I see. It does not have the city's letterhead on it, but it's the one dated December 28th, 2020, Clealum Ridge Community Forest, RCO Community Forest Program Application FY 2021. And take a second.
Is there a second anywhere? Oh. I see Beth has raved.
Sorry, my button doesn't work half the time.
Yes. All right. It's been moved by Stephen, seconded by Beth Williams to authorize the mayor to send this letter supporting the RCO Community Forest Program Application. Questions on the motion?
I'll just say once more, I'm, I'm gonna vote against it solely because I haven't seen the application that I'm voting on a letter to support. I support the community forest idea and, and what you all are doing. I've talked to Brian pretty extensively about it. But without actually seeing the application, it's hard for me to vote on something that I, to support something I haven't seen. So.
Any other?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna support it. I, I think we can get local influence on it.
Hey, there's no other questions? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Oh, Mickey, what was your response?
I'm a nay.
Your nay?
I'm a nay.
Okay.
I just want, like, to have more information.
Okay, so there's one, two, three, four ayes and there are two nays. The motion is passed. And they'll get us more information. This is, this is a long-term thing. Will be good for the community and I share your concerns. But we'll keep progressing. And if otherwise, we'll let it go at that, Brian. And let's see. How do you say your last name?
Basie.
Basie, right? Okay, all right. I, I learned the other one last time.
That's correct.
You got it good this time. But thank you. We, we, again, I mean, we, the, the more information we get in advance of, of how, of, you know, the, the perception of this, the better, I think. And I did put the grant language in the chat. If anyone wants to check it out, or I can email it to them, if that'd be easier. So be happy to answer any follow-up questions as well. And thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're down to, there's no business requiring public hearings. There's no unfinished business and under new business. The first thing we have here is ordinance number 1587, and we're amending the 2020 budget. Robert, you, Omen, our administrator is gonna take that. What do you read for us, Robert?
Okay, thanks, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Yeah, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. Essentially, there's some, some, well, let's go over the first one is, is for the First Street Stormwater Construction, the grant. And we just didn't budget enough and we needed a budget of 75,000 more. Again, these are numbers are inflated a little bit, just in case there's more that comes through. But it's all grant money. There's no money coming out of the other fund. And, and same with all of the developer funds. We just didn't budget enough at the beginning of this year to cover everything. In fact, City Heights wasn't even really thought of. And, and so we didn't budget anything there for, for this year. And so just numbers that we're throwing in there to make sure that it gets covered for the rest of the year. With that, I would just recommend adopting ordinance 1587.
So moved. Again.
All right, moved and seconded, I believe, was Stephen Harper made the motion. And Ken, did you second it? Who seconded that?
Yeah, I did.
Ken, okay. Okay, questions on the motion, Beth?
Did I hear you say, Rob, this is all grant money that's funding all of this?
Well, the first one is grant money. And then the next three are developer funds. So they're actually, we bill, like, we bill Sun Communities. We bill City Heights and we bill Sun Cadia. So it's not coming from grants. But, but the first one's coming from grants and the next three are reimbursable by development.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none. The, the ordinance 1587 has passed. And now we're going down to 10B. And I really didn't, Matthew, write down the exact verbiage for this discussion.
I sent them to Kathy, so she didn't have to try to type them out. So I, first, I, I thank you for allowing me to amend the agenda. I, I intended to send some of these in earlier and generally get a reminder from, from Kathy about the agenda deadline, and I forgot. And so I just assumed that this would be the next appropriate time. So apologies for kind of piling these on at the end. So the first one simply is, I want to have a discussion about the status of our COVID-19 state of emergency that we, on March 9th, the mayor declared a civil emergency existed in the city. And that same night, we ratified that proclamation with Resolution 2020-10. The last clause in support of the emergency references the mayor's belief that local resources will be rapidly overwhelmed and a high state of danger to the health and lives of residents of Clealum exists. I certainly believe the COVID-19 is a serious public health threat. And in March, yeah, we really didn't have a lot of idea of what to expect. So discussion I wanted to have, and the question I wanted to pose is, are we still under a state of emergency seven months later? Certainly, we still have active cases in the county and all of that, but, but is it still an emergency? And I would submit, even if we were to repeal the ratification of the proclamation, that we could always have another if the need arose. And additionally, I believe, probably in the future, we should put a periodic renewal clause on future resolutions like this, just like with the state level, where the, in absence of legislative reconcession, the, the leaders of the four corners or the four caucuses come together and have to approve an extension of the governor's proclamations so that they're regularly reviewed. So we don't just sort of operate under a perpetual state of emergency. So I just wanted to, to put that out there. Maybe the mayor has some input. I, I don't necessarily want to take any action tonight. I just wanted to bring it up, since we're about seven months from when we declared it. And just curious if that's something that, that we feel needs to continue in the, in the state of emergency that, that we're in.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm gonna have to find out.
Okay.
You know, I'll make inquiries and see, you know, what, you know, I, I haven't thought about, to be honest with you, and and what prompted us in the first, first place. And I'll, I'll find out what, what the ramifications for or against having the, the emergency declaration. So.
My, my understanding is some of it, I think, is tied to, to federal funny, funny, federal money, like FEMA funds. But I know, my understanding is that some cities who received CARES Act funds are not in a state of emergency. So it didn't seem to affect the ability to get those funds. So this is not to diminish the, the seriousness of COVID-19 or anything like that. I just, I feel like we all forgot we were in a state of emergency. And I just wanted to make sure that we, we thought about if that was still a necessary thing for us to, to be in.
Yeah, probably one would, it started, it really wasn't very evident what we were getting into.
Indeed.
And if it's tapering off or not, if it's necessary, I'll definitely find out and we'll be able to have a, a discussion where we can decide one way or the other about.
I appreciate that. Um, so the, the, the second thing was consideration of an ordinance to repeal CMC Chapter 2.12. Relating to the city meat inspector, I sent this to Rob and Kathy back in April. It's an ordinance that I wrote, which I will share on the screen here. If I can find it. Here we go.
Oh, I see.
Too many things open on my computer here. Here we go. So essentially, the ordinance. So I, I, back in April, I was familiarizing myself with the municipal code during the stay-at-home order and noticed that there's a few places where we have codes that made sense at the time, but were never repealed or cleaned up. And, and I submitted it then and it wasn't necessary in routine, which was what the governor allowed under his OKMA proclamation. It's a pretty simple ordinance. It just says that we're striking CMC 2.12 in its entirety. For those who aren't familiar, the chapter contains the position of the city meat inspector, who in 1928 was given charge to, quote, "During the month of April of each year, make an inspection of each cow, the milk of which is sold or consumed in the city." This position, I, I don't believe, has been filled for decades and would probably be duplicative for what the USDA does now. So I, I'm simply wanting to begin cleaning up the code. I think it's important for us to have a clean code and the ability to enforce our code. But we need to make sure if we're, if we're gonna enforce our code, that we have things in there that don't need to be in there removed. So don't necessarily need passage tonight, although it, it is pretty simple. And I, I would ask you all to support passage, just to strike this unnecessary chapter from our code.
So if I might speak to this?
Go ahead.
Okay. It, it doesn't have a, an ordinance number. And so if I was to support it, I would imagine that we would give it ordinance 1588.
So if you, if you notice, Section 3, I, I, I put in there essentially for them to be able to fill in the ordinance number and make other corrections as necessary, since there may be some cleanup, as long as the intent stays as it is.
Well, it certainly isn't a, it certainly isn't complicated. And while it's not orthodox, I don't think it's creating bad precedent to clean up code. I know that there was voiced concern that if we just capriciously went through the code and started axing things capriciously and not methodically, that there could be problems. But I don't see any harm in the repealing of this code. And with that, I would, if we're giving it an ordinance 1588, I would motion that we enact the ordinance and take a second.
I, I'm gonna ask you something. You told me there would be no action taken on these.
Yeah, I, I'm.
I said there was no. Sir, I have a, I'm a, I'm the motioner, and so I will speak to that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, as I said, I believe if I'm correct, and you can certainly look, is that we were not necessarily looking for action on all of these.
Oh.
And then I think I was cleared also to make it clear that, that didn't preclude us making, taking action on it. And so I do have a motion and I'm seeking a second.
I, I would second it for further discussion. Only to say that I'm happy for it to be referred to a committee. I don't know what committee it would be appropriate for it to be referred to. But happy, happy if that's the, the will of the council, that we can refer it to the appropriate committee and, and have that discussion.
Well, okay, here's the point. When we have discussions like this and put, we have an agenda. This is not very important, I agree. But we have an agenda, so people know what our discussions will be and what we're gonna do in advance. So to, and I have nothing against it, okay? It's just the procedure. This should be on the agenda that everybody knows ahead of time, even though it's a very simple thing. And that's just as a kind of a. And that's just as a kind of a precedent that I like to, I think that we should follow. Ken?
Yeah, I'd like to add to what the mayor has said, that we're really making, we're a legislative authority. And a hallmark of it is to thoroughly vet these things. And staff hasn't looked at it, legal, and it's obvious, okay, Matthew, it is obvious. But still, I would rather we did not vote on passing a law or repealing a law without taking our time to be deliberate, because if it becomes a habit, we can be making laws rather arbitrarily. And so I would rather that we not, if we bring this to a vote, I will vote no, it just needs more time.
I appreciate that. I guess I would just say, I submitted this five months ago through the, what I thought was the appropriate channels, and didn't hear any back. So I'm glad to have this referred to a committee if we'd like to have more discussion on this. I just, there are many cases in the code where we need to make these adjustments. And I'd like to take the task of starting to do them. And so I'm happy for this to be referred to the appropriate committee, so we can go through that process. Totally understand if that's how we want to go about that.
The other part of it is, you know, I agree. I know that you did present this sometime earlier, for sure. And at that time, it really wasn't necessary, of course. But we can, if we bring it up in our regular channel, let Kathy know, put it on the agenda, so everybody knows ahead of time. And if even as simple as this, we still follow that method, mostly because people will know what we're doing. That's my point. Okay, any other questions? No, if not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So.
Three to three.
Three to three. So you know what I'm gonna vote.
I don't.
It's, no, it's not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm not voting for it. And that's okay. Let's put it on, let's go through our regular channels, let's put it on the agenda, so everybody knows, no matter how we come about it, ahead of time. That's my, only my point. Okay.
So can I get some clarity? Sorry, so I heard two different things. So is it that it needs to go through and be put on the agenda? Or is it that it needs more study and needs to go to a committee for that? I'm just, I want to make sure I understand the.
Well, there's, you know, there is, it's kind of layered, you might say. Yes, it could be that it is a very complicated one, and we address one by itself. But on the other hand, there might be a number of them that we would group together as one time. Okay, we're gonna get rid of this, 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 and this, and beyond the agenda, everybody knows, and away we go. You know, so it's kind of multi-layered. Something could be no question, everybody knows. So hang on, Stephen. Then the others should take some consideration, and that's what we have to kind of think about. Stephen?
So I can certainly appreciate the mayor's wishes on this. But our problem is, is we sought a committee to create these type of rules. And basically, what you're outlining is an unwritten system of rules that everybody should just consider because their reasonableness has been around there through tradition, but they haven't been memorialized as rules of this council. And I think that's where our frustration lies, is what if we want to bring something? Maybe it's, we bring it early, maybe it's, we bring it to a committee, maybe it comes to this meeting by virtue of the fact that we throw it on the agenda. There's no rules really in effect, other than the general prescriptions in the revised Code of Washington for our order. And I think that's where the frustration comes out, is there is no protocol. There's a somewhat tradition of how things have come to the council as far as, you know, repealing an ordinance or enacting an ordinance or a resolution, but there's actually no official memorialization of that, that I know of.
And that's why.
The only thing that I'm stressing, the reason why we can change it any way we want, that people know ahead of time what we're, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm saying. I can respect that.
Okay.
And just like these meetings, we do all of our work in the public, so people know what we're doing.
Agreed.
And no surprises, that's what it is. And so we'll work on that. And I see you kind of segued into 10D. And I'll have to find out, really, from Gary. His idea was that we would have these discussions as a council in person. And it looks like, obviously, we can't do that, but we do have to come up with another system to have, more or less, I guess his idea was to have sort of a, almost like a retreat, where we would all have a chance to discuss our views on, just like you said, Stephen, that we need to have this, we need to have that. And he wanted to do that in person. I have really neglected in following up with him to find out what we should do, so how we can progress on this, considering the fact we can't have large group meetings. I open it up.
So on item D, I just wanted to, yeah, I wanted to follow up on this. It's been, I understand that COVID and other factors have contributed to a delay, but it's been five months since we talked about doing policies and procedures. And I guess my question is, as separately elected officials, I think it's our duty to prioritize this and put in the time and the work, you know, to develop, so we can have better conduct for our meetings and serve our constituents. And in thinking more about this and, you know, discussing with some, I would suggest that the council take the lead on developing the legislation to govern our branch of government. Honestly, I was hoping the entire council would work on this project collectively in a, you know, public and open transparent process, because it's important. It is gonna be a consequential piece of legislation that addresses how we work and how we operate and how we do our jobs better. And so I guess I'm gonna suggest, and that we consider having the council form the committee and get started. I would really like to.
Here's just a point. What the idea was to have study sessions with the whole council, not just a few. We were gonna have study sessions with the whole council to develop this thing, exactly the direction we planned on going.
Well, I would argue that you appointed a committee of just a few members, as opposed to having us develop this together. And I don't, I guess, my question is, what precludes us from doing this as a committee of the whole, for lack of a better term?
Coronavirus.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, hang on a minute, hang on a minute. In my discussions with Gary Byrne, his plan with this committee was to have study sessions with the council in person. And we almost got started on that, we had plans for it, and it all fell aside. And I admit, I have not followed up and pressured, you know, he really is just a facilitator. That's all it was, and it was gonna be the entire council endeavor at a study session, where we could all come together. And it could be that we're gonna have to do it on Zoom, just like you say, we'll have to. That's the only way we can, at this time, all meet together. So go ahead.
So as far as I understand, the restrictions are groups of, no more than groups of 10. We are a council of seven, with you and Kathy and Gary, that would get us to 10. We could use a large room, wear masks, be distanced. I believe that we can, and I believe that we should, as an entire group, have this conversation, because this is very, very important, and I don't think we can wait any longer.
I will contest that. I don't think this is that important. I don't think it's a high priority, and I don't think it needs to be done remotely and with masks over our face. And it's not an open public process unless everybody can be there in person.
Can I speak to your statement?
Go ahead.
I would speak to your statement, Ken, as to why it's important. Right now, we're not operating under any written rules of how to proceed as a council. There is no written guidance. Literally, when I rise, when I object, and I say, I'm rising to a point of order, I'm rising to an imagined point of order that is inferred by Robert's Rules of Order, which we are not bound to, which, you know, maybe something is common decency. But basically, we're making up the rules as we go along, and that's gone well, but it's not a good framework. And using COVID as a reason that we can't, Matt has just put out a framework whereby we can meet in a safe way that's not a harm to anybody.
Okay, I still object. I don't think it's an open public process. I think this is bogus. There's many people that would like to be in and that, for technical reasons, they can't be a part of it. There's nothing, yeah, you might say there's nothing to prevent them, but this is an emergency thing. And if we've never had these emergency policies and procedures that are so important, how is the city surviving if it's so important?
Sorry, sorry, we're not speaking about emergency procedures. We're literally speaking about the simple rules of how the council is supposed to conduct their business.
Yeah, so if we've been able to function without wonderful rules for so long, why is it an emergency now?
Okay, so that's a point, I'm gonna make a point, Stephen, all right, hang on. We can actually make any rules we want, okay? Now, yes, we have been functioning for quite some time with basically a system of consensus. That's really what it's been for many, many years. You know, there is the procedure you have to go through, and you're right, it has not been written down. So, okay, this is something that we should look at. I have no problem with that, and we can do that, we can look at it. And how we go about it, you know, okay, the times are a little bit, a little bit, you know, different right now, okay? But let's, we'll set something up, where the whole council, the whole council can share what they have to say, and we can, we'll figure out how we do it in a way that allows as much participation as possible. And like I said.
Then the only request.
Do it in person, maybe we can't do it that way. All right, then we'll figure something else out, okay? And I agree with you, Matthew. It should be a whole council-wise thing. But I've said enough, go ahead, what else you guys?
Then my only request, my only request then would be that we visited every meeting and see at least, at each meeting, we'll know what the progress is on it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I should have followed up on it myself. I completely admit, you know, that it's been fallen by the wayside, and it was in the back of my mind, I admit. So I don't.
Okay, we got a lot of stuff going on.
We'll do it, okay. What else? And Matthew, you have something I can tell?
I just wanted to say, Ken, I understand where you're coming from. And I'm not trying to say that we're doing something wrong or the city's wrong. I'm just saying, I'm new, I've been on the job about what we're going on, going on the end of my ninth month. And looking at other, I've worked with other council members, they have extensive codes that talk about all the stuff related to their council. So I started with kind of a blank slate, not really knowing how we did things, because it's not memorialized anywhere. And that's my only concern, is knowing how to operate. Most other council members I know bring legislation to the council, and it's, there's a stated process. There isn't one here, and I did it, and it seemed like it caught some people off guard. And so I'm just trying to figure out what the rules are and how we go, so I can be effective. Because that's why I ran for council, is to get some things done and serve my constituents, as we all did. And I'm just trying to figure out how to do it within the framework that we have set out, or to set one.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and I hear it loud and clear. And we will figure out a way that, it'll be new, and I follow, I know exactly where you're coming from. But we will, Stephen, memorialize some method of conducting our business. We will do that, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
And just, you know, my motivation is not to have a rigid set of rules, because rules can always be suspended, rules can be morphed and changed. It's just so we all have a starting point. The goal is not to create contention, it's to alleviate contention before it happens in the future. Because we won't always be this super council that actually is progressing. You know, we could have seasons of, you know, where we have combativeness between the council. And I just want to have a way to be able to have, you know, a framework before that happens. I think we have a great council that is all moving, you know, in the same general direction. But I don't know, we've had seasons where we didn't have that, and then we didn't have rules to try to deal with that.
I'm very well aware of what you're speaking.
I've read those minutes.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Learning experience, it's been wonderful, and we're all moving ahead. Don't worry, those build character, I will tell you. So is there any other, well, committee report?
I would just say quickly, IT Committee, we moved forward with engaging Methodworks Consulting for our server replacement project. We had a check-in meeting with him last Wednesday, or Tuesday, I want to say. And he put together a really, really good project plan with a timeline. It's aggressive, but I think reachable. We're gonna be beginning with doing our email migration and getting us off the county servers onto our own system, which will be really great for a lot of reasons, and then moving forward with procuring the equipment and getting everything changed out. So we will, I think by the end of the year, be all moved over and in good shape. So thank you for accommodating that special meeting, so we can get that going. We're excited to get this completed.
Okay, great. Any idea when the council will be getting their communication devices, any idea there?
Great, great question. I don't know, Councilor Harper or Rob, do we have authorization?
I'd like to speak to that. What, we have everything, but we're kind of, we don't want to duplicate extra effort. And so we're somewhat waiting on the timing, so that we can set these all up as clealum.gov versus having to, you know, set them all up and then reset them all up. But it's sooner than later. So within the next couple of weeks, we anticipate deployment.
Well, you know, I got such a lousy connection out here with, I'm on my internet connection here. I can't get satellite in here until the 10th, and they're gonna install it Saturday, the 10th. So if you're coming through, wait until the 10th or after the 10th at my house, because you're just gonna come back and reset it up.
It'll be after the 10th.
Mickey.
Okay.
Mickey, hang on. We're gonna make a special room for you at City Hall, okay?
No, I got there, but I've been dragging my feet and hooking up to a satellite here to get the internet here at home. I need to get on it. So it, and I got it ordered, but they're so far behind that you can't, it won't be until the 10th of October that they get here to install it. Because what I got now drops off.
Okay.
You know, if I watch a movie, it rebuffs about eight times.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
I wouldn't be listening to much of you. But then again, there are some conversations, it'd be nice if I was rebuffing.
Yes, thank you, Mickey. Any other committee reports? If not, it looks like number 12 is a motion. I make a motion that we adjourn. Are you guys sure?
I second that.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded into adjourn, doggone it, we're having so much fun.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Have a great night.
Okay.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you all, bye-bye.
Yeah.
Bye.